Commissioner, you want to take your mask down there?
Yeah, I can do that. Hey, we're gonna be close, yeah.
Yeah, you're gonna be close.
We're far enough away up here.
You know, as a point of pride, in forty-one years of journalism, forty years, I never had to photograph a grin and grin, and now I'm in one. It just seems appropriate.
Well, you don't have, nobody will know if you're grinning or not. Right?
That's right.
Oh, good, I get it in the background here.
Sure, put her in the back.
There we go.
Thank you for the service of the county.
Thank you.
Is this your wife Nancy with you?
You can cover it.
That'll be, that'll be fun. And I just, I just wanted to say, "Thank you," because I know how often you hear that, and so I wanted to make sure that you heard it once during your term.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, appreciate it.
Thank you Nancy for letting him come and serve all that time in the evenings. I know that takes away from your family time, appreciate it. Nicely done.
Thank you. Now we'll take up new business. First up is, I'll now open the public hearing on application number 202002735. A. Keith Hill and John Florino. Public hearing is now open, first we'll hear from staff.
Sorry, I'm trying to bring up the...
Okay.
...sentation.
Staff, present your...
Yep, we're gonna hear first from ta, from staff, and then we'll take testimony.
There we go.
So there are actually two applications. They are both appeals of the planning and zoning approval of the conditional use master site plan for an expansion of a winery. One of the appellants is Mr. Hill, and the other is Mr. Ferioni. On the location of the property, this is the vicinity map of the property. It's along Highway sixteen. So these are the, Mr. Florino and Mr. Hill are the appellants. They live towards the south property lines. Mr. Hudson also submitted testimony in opposition of the winery. If we look at Mr. Florino's house is about a hundred, I believe it's a hundred feet from the property line. This is the existing winery structure, and this is the existing parking area. They are going to expand that parking area, and it will, should be approximately a hundred and twenty-five feet from the southern property lines. If we look at Mr. Hill's property, it is vacant land, there are no structures on that property, and Mr. Hudson's home is located right here on his property. The Shurleys did comment, they do live across Highway sixteen, and they're kinda up on top of this hill, so they commented in support of the winery. So this is the proposed production area, and then they have overflow parking right here. I know it was identified in the appellants' letters about the road coming up along their property line. That has been identified on the plan, that that is a maintenance road for the agricultural growing of the vines. So they would take their vehicles for just maintaining the winery, that's not open to the public.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Diana, can you blow this up so we can see it a little bit better? It's really tough to read.
I actually have another picture of it, 'cause I noticed that that's a little bit hard to, to look at. Trying to get that off. So this is the, the master site plan. This is the production facility and the overflow parking. This is their driveway up to the current facility and to their residence. They are proposing some equipment storage located right here. And then this is the property line. This is the, the maintenance road for the vineyard. And then this is the, their private driveway coming up to the existing tasting room. There is an existing parking area, they are asking to expand that, but it's still quite a distance to the property line to the south. They do have a future tasting room, and then they have a future overlook with patios and seating in this area. So this road will just have a turnaround for their own personal vehicles to maintain that vineyard.
Can you scroll over so we can see what is to the, okay, so you're not showing any facilities? No, here we go, no. So there, the homes are to the south of us, right?
That is correct.
Can you show us in relationship to the future tasting room? And the future parking expansion where the, their homes are?
So this is the existing parking, and they have the expansion. Mr. Ferioni's house is a hundred feet from this property line.
Okay, that helps, thank you.
So the, the appellants have said they wanted certain things done. They are proposing that commercial buildings be moved to the northwest end of the property, bordering BLM land. And then they are concerned with this access maintenance road. They want it moved to the areas south of the current parking area, which is up here. And Mr. Hill had nine things that he had proposed. He wants those buildings moved to the north property line, and move any other new buildings north of the, the residence. Move the access road away from the property line, and then have the winery hours reduced from, to ten to six with twenty-four promotional events until eight PM. All music events would be ticketed and limited to thirty people. Private events with more than ten patrons trigger the promotional events. They also would like the adjacent property owners to be notified with the county of the twenty-four events. They want the parking to be truncated to twenty-three spaces and no food trucks. Staff is recommending denial of the appeal and uphold the P&amp;Z Commission's approval of the conditional use master site plan. The P&amp;Z Commission did look at all of the things that were proposed, they listened to all the testimony, they did have conditions of approval for the application to try to address the neighbors' issues, and I'll stand for any questions.
What were the P&amp;Z's conditions of approval?
I believe you have a copy of that? And I can get that.
Are those all in Exhibit A?
They were a late exhibit. So they have, they have to have written approval from Central District Health. The Star Fire District engineer has to approve the drainage runoff plan. They also required that the master site plan be modified to include the following items. They were to provide a site plan showing the plantings around the production facility for the director's review. The owners shall provide detailed plans of the parking areas, showing that parking spaces comply with the minimum depth and width, and that there is a twenty-five-foot two-way driving area. They also are supposed to depict how patrons will get from the overflow parking area to the tasting rooms. They are supposed to submit a lighting plan. They have to get a building permit for any structures, and if they have retaining walls greater than four feet, then they shall have structural engineering calculations. They shall submit...
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
There's four pages of this, forty items, you wanted to read all of them?
No, you didn't need to read all of them. I've read, I've read them, I just wanted to get, if you could highlight them, that's what I was mainly interested in, is, is the highlighting, and if any of them addressed some of the, some of the applicant's concerns.
They do have conditions that address the, the number of events. They also address the lighting with the requirement for the lighting plan be submitted. I believe they also address the noise and the landscaping, which were some of the issues that the appellants had.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So these were new conditions that you brought up in light of the appellants' concerns?
I believe that P&amp;Z approved these conditions, even after hearing the appellants, at their hearing for the conditional use master site plan. I did not add any because it seemed like they were all addressed in the conditions, so I took the P&amp;Z conditions and added them to the findings.
Thank you.
So, so the applicant was at the P&amp;Z hearing and, and give their, their suggestions, and the, and the P&amp;Z board considered those suggestions, and that's what some of these restrictions are?
That is correct. And I'll stand for any questions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Are you gonna be separately presenting the Florinos' issues?
No, they're gonna present their own, their own issues. They get, they get to...
Well, she brought, she's brought up the Hill concerns in your presentation, didn't you?
I did. Mr. Hill is gonna do a presentation, and Mr. Ferioni is gonna do a presentation also.
So they're both gonna do their, okay. All right, is there any other questions of staff?
Not at this time, but I might call her up there.
Not at this time, but we may call you back. Okay. I thank you. Do we have Mr. Hill on the line? Mr. Hill? Do we have Keith Hill on the line?
He's on the line, it appears maybe he's micros on his power.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I do have his presentation. He did send me a copy, but I'm sure he would like to...
Well, we need to hear from him, if he's, if he's, if he can arrange. Maybe we can go first into Mr. Fiorino, is Mr. Fiorino here or online?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine. Now, do you have, staff, do you, do you have his, his presentation, Fiorino? All right, Mr. Fiorino, welcome to the, to the planning, it's only, hearing.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Diane, Diane has my presentation because I can't get it in, I can't get into WebEx.
Okay, just for your, just for your notification, Mr. Fiorino, we normally allow fifteen minutes, and we're gonna split this into, into, in half, so you will have seven and a half minutes for your presentation, okay?
Well, I was under the impression that I had fifteen minutes.
Well, we have fifteen minutes for the whole, the whole, uh, uh, the whole appeal, and we've split that up because it's appeal of the same project. And so, we'll, we'll start with, with your seven and a half and see how it goes, okay?
Okay, I'll, I'll go as quickly as I can, but I don't, we'll see if I make the seven and a half.
Well, we wanna make sure, we wanna make sure you get, you get, you get everything you need to say, so go ahead.
Well, I live at eighty-six hundred West High Ridge Lane, and I am on the south corner of Dude DeWalt Cellars. My wife and I, Chris, have been living here for seventeen years, and we moved here because of the rural residential setting, we love the views, the surrounding area, the reduced traffic, and the lack of light pollution. This evening I would like to provide testimony showing that the Dude DeWalt Cellars has had a negative impact on our property and lifestyle, and we will show that there's been a lack of adherence to the conditions of approval, and that the additional request of the facility and tasting room will only add to this overall negative impact. So if we can move to slide two, recap of understandings, I think I've covered that. But part of it also is, on December eleventh of twenty eighteen, we attended the neighborhood meeting held by the owners of Dude DeWalt Cellars, at which time we were informed of their desire to plant a vineyard. Based on what we were told during that meeting, we had no concerns with what was presented, and in fact, we liked the idea of having a vineyard close to the property. You can go to slide three. This slide is what was presented at the neighborhood meeting. Slide three, please, Diana?
I believe I'm on slide three.
Okay, thank you. This was presented at the neighborhood meeting, and this is what Commissioner Birch called the initial plan, the pup tent. The X in the bottom of the plan represents our home, which looks very small on that slide. Our front door and windows are more than five feet from the property line. You could go to slide four, the twenty nineteen announcement.
Yep.
When we received the announcement from Idaho County Police Services in March of twenty nineteen, the conditional use of master plan represented what was presented at the neighborhood meeting, and we did not have any issues with what was proposed at that time. There were five parking stalls with one eighty-eight, eighty-eight hours of operation from twelve to six, seven days a week. No mention of marketing, promotional, or event center activities other than wine tasting. Slide five, please. In May twenty nineteen, which was the approval of that, requested additional parking proposal and added one additional winery use parking. The hours of operational were increased from ten AM to ten PM daily. As you can see, the majority of wineries open at noon and go to five or six in the evening. The marketing promotional events were limited to no more than twelve per year with a maximum attendance of thirty attendees per event. Go to slide six. At the neighbor, I'll go ahead and start, at the neighbor, neighborhood meeting on September fourteenth, twenty twenty, we raised concerns regarding the operation of the Dude DeWalt Cellars and the negative impact it was having on us. We raised concerns about the number of cars being parked significantly above the six approved, approximately thirty-five plus cars have been parked almost to the property line. After raising our concern, the owners cleared and graded additional space south of the approved parking area to make it easier for their customers to park further south, closer to the property line. Pictures at the end of the presentation show these parked cars nearly to the fence. During an additional event on Saturday, January ninth, twenty twenty-one, the code enforcement officer Kevin Horn was called regarding approximately forty cars being parked. Additional pictures were sent to Mr. Danielson for discussions with Officer Duran. With this number of cars being parked, it becomes obvious that the maximum attendance of thirty people has been exceeded. We have also brought up concerns with the volume of live music at the event. On more than one occasion, there was live music with amplification that was so loud we could hear it at our kitchen table with all the doors and windows closed. We called the tasting room to complain about the volume of the music, and were told by the tasting room employee that there was nothing they could do because of live music. On more than one occasion, cars have come up to our front door looking for the winery, even though our street is a private road and the entrance to our property has a private property sign. In addition, we have noticed significantly more external lighting. Slide seven, the revised plan. This slide... Hello? Yeah? Yeah, that's Keith. I'm sorry, who's this?
Is that Mr. Hill also talking through?
Yeah.
Well, if Mr. Hill could mute...
Oh, okay. Okay, so we can move to slide seven, this shows the revised plan, any eighteen production to be very close to our property. This is what Commissioner Birch referred to as the three-ring circus. So we've gone from a pup tent to a three-ring circus. Move to slide eight, the plans approved on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. At this meeting, the eight parking spaces were increased to eighty-three, significantly more than any other local winery. The winery has become an event center, events including outdoor music that's amplified and food trucks. The number of marketing promotion events such as wine makers dinners, wine club events, et cetera, was increased from twenty, from twelve to twenty-four per year, and increased the number of guests at each event from thirty to fifty. Mrs. Booker has stated that the number of twenty-four events is just for ticketed planned events, and that they can have an unlimited number of private events such as birthdays, anniversaries, weddings, et cetera. However, stated in the conditions of approval, other events such as weddings, et cetera, are specifically prohibited, and you can see that in Exhibit A, page three, paragraph twenty-five. Since December twenty eighteen, very few vines have been planted, significantly less than was initially proposed. Instead, grapes are being purchased from other vineyards, including outside the state of Idaho. Slide nine, this is distances of the witnesses from the winery. So slide nine, please, there you go. As you can see from this slide, individuals providing testimony in favor of the winery expansion live nowhere near the winery, and therefore do not understand nor feel the negative impact it has on those living nearby. If we can go to slide ten, this shows the closer neighbors, and the only neighbor that testified favorably regarding the winery lives twenty-one hundred and forty-six feet away, across Highway sixteen. And you can see that four of the home, very close to the winery.
Mr. Fiorino?
Yes.
Could you wrap it up? We, we, we're past eight minutes now, so if you could wrap it up, we'd appreciate it.
This is Mr. Hill, can you hear me? We can go to the last slide, fourteen, which is our proposal. And I want to make it perfectly clear, we do not have an issue with the original vineyard plan, in fact, we look forward to it. We do have significant issues that the addition of the production facility and the tasting room will negatively impact the property value and lifestyle. It is these, is for these reasons that we propose that these buildings and the associated parking area be moved to the north end of the property, meaning vacant the old land, which will not affect any of the Kling estate's homeowners. We also propose that the hours of operation be reduced to those of similar winery tasting rooms, twelve to six PM daily. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the listeners this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorino. Mr. Hill, are you online now? You can, you can start your...
Can you hear, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you just fine.
Can we, can we start with something procedural? Mr. Fiorino paid a full fee of three hundred and fifty dollars for fifteen minutes, and so did I.
Would you like a full fifteen minutes?
I want Mr. Fiorino to have the balance of his time, and I want my full fifteen minutes.
Well...
It's two applicants, and we both pay the full fee, sir.
It's up, well, it's up to the commission, if you want to grant him the full fifteen minutes, it's up to you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Are you fine with it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
And, and just, Mr. Chair, just to let Mr. Fiorino know and Mr. Hill know, we have read everything that you've submitted, and so much of the information that you went through originally there, Mr. Fiorino, we had actually read. So if you had testimony tonight that wasn't included in the previous packet that was given to us, that might be most helpful.
And can I just add, there will be, we will be asking you questions as well to clarify issues, so...
Yeah.
We're not here to, to limit your testimony or the evidence, it'll be covered one way or the other.
Can we first ask John if he wants any additional time now?
Sure, you can ask him.
John, do you want additional time?
Mr. Fiorino, are you online?
I guess he's not, we'll proceed.
All right, start, go ahead.
All right, Diana...
All right, um, Diana has a, um, PDF of mine if she can, I'll identify it by slide number. And while she's getting slide number one. Oh, John, do you want?
I am online.
John, do you want the balance of the seven minutes of your time?
Yeah, I could, I'll, I'll do it quickly and go to a certain, uh, just a couple of slides. Let me, let me pick those slides. Uh, if we could go to slide 13. Okay, I'm going to go ahead as we're going to that slide, I'm just going to go ahead. Based on the Booker's drawings of future tasting room, which was number 16 on the slide. Uh. Would, uh, 16 would only be approximately 140 feet from our property line. Not the 200, 250 feet as Mr. Booker testified on January 14th, 2021. In addition, the patio seat number two on the slide is only 30 feet from the property line. So if you look at that, you're talking about people seated on the patio. That we can see from our deck and they could see up in the deck as well. So it's only 30 feet from the property line.
Yeah.
Also, the proposed septic system is close to our well pump. So there's a dark, there's a dark square that shows the septic system as well. So. I, I obviously skipped a lot of slides, but I think that's important that that be, uh, be understood regarding, uh, what was proposed.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If Mr. Fierino could stand for questions, I've got a couple of questions.
Would you like to stand for several questions, Mr. Fierino?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, go, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, this is Commissioner, uh, Kendra Canyon. So, um, can we go, Diana, can we go back to his proposal? The proposal slide, you had come up with three or four proposals on where to relocate some of the buildings. And to limit the hours of operation, I believe, um, we'll get to it. Did you have conversations, um, with the owners of the winery, um, around these proposals?
Mr. Fierino? Are you, are you online, Mr. Fierino?
Yes, I am, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine, we had a question for you, did you hear us?
Yeah, and if you look at the slide that's currently up, this was discussed and rejected. Uh, by the Buchers. And you could see that I've actually on the drawing placed the production facility and the tasting room north. End of the property, which is adjacent to BLM land.
Commissioner.
And I think it was, it was turned down because they said they didn't have a view.
Okay, well, we can ask, um, the Buchers if, I think they're going to be providing testimony, so I can clarify that. Were there any other proposals, um, that you came up with besides the three of these, Mr. Fierino?
Besides the three of these, no, that was the three that we could.
Okay, and if you were, um, if they were to accept, uh, something around these proposals, you would be okay with them moving forward?
We'd be perfectly happy with that because initially it was supposed to be vineyards that we'd be looking at, not buildings.
Yeah, okay, thank you, sir, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Fierino. Mr. Fierino, do you have anything else for us?
Uh, unless you have any questions, I think I'm done.
I have one further question, Mr. Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Fierino, can you go back and show us the septic system? You said the, there was, the slide went by pretty quickly and I didn't have a chance to really take a look at the septic.
I think it's slide 13, I think.
And is that?
Yeah, look at slide 13.
Yep.
If you see the red writing, the septic system, that's pointing at that little square. And our well pump is about 10 feet on the other side of the property line.
Okay, you're breaking up a little bit, so I'm going to ask Diana, so this is the existing septic system?
This, I believe, is the proposed septic system.
That's the proposed. Okay, and how far away is that from their home?
From their property?
It's approximately.
I don't have an exact number, but their home is 100 feet. The Fierino's, um, home is approximately 100 feet from the property line.
Okay.
So I, we could ask the Buchards what, um, how many feet that is.
Let me, let me.
The septic system is about 40 feet from the, from our well pump.
Okay, you're breaking up, it's kind of hard to hear you. Did you say the septic tank is 40 feet away from your well pump?
Yes, the septic, the planned septic system that's on this drawing is approximately 40 feet from our well pump. And the septic system is approximately 130 feet from our home.
Okay. All right, um, and do you know which, where the drain field is, Diana?
I do not, um, Central District Health is the one that regulates the septic systems. And they do check to see where wells are at because there is a distance that's required from any well.
Diana, I have a question, uh, either from Mr. Fierino or from you. If, uh, the, the septic system is, is in their property and their, and their, uh, it's 100 feet. How's, how's a well pump being 40 feet from the septic system?
The.
I'm sorry, I don't understand that question.
The property owner to the south is saying that they're going to put a septic system in 40 feet from their well. But Central District Health is the one that would give the permit for a septic system. And they do verify where wells are at because there's a, a required distance. I think they show this, um, septic system as a proposed septic system, I don't believe it's had approval from.
So Central District Health will have to approve any, any, uh, septic system. And they have regulations regarding septic systems and dip, and differential, the, the depth from a well.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, okay, Mr. Fierino, do you have anything else?
I think that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Hill, you have a full 15 minutes.
All right, thank you, first of all, do you hear me?
Yes, when you hear you just fine.
Fantastic, there's issues here and the issue is I've read the staff recommendation of denial, staff in this case is Diana. Um, I understand her findings and that was helpful in our appeal. The issue is there are laws and there are goals. And compliance with the laws perhaps, compliance with the goals, not at all.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Three.
Excuse me, can we turn the volume down a little bit? It just sounds like he's yelling and it's, it's hard to hear.
All right, I can, I can turn down, stand hand by.
There, okay, that's, that sounds better, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Let me. Well, I have a propensity yell, so I'm going to be loud. Um, three goals, agriculture. This is grazed land and certainly growing vineyards is agriculture. Ada County wants agriculture, wants vineyards, and we all dream of great vineyards. But since their application two years ago, the Buchers have not planted any more vines on this property. Business and commerce. We are in favor of business and commerce and paying taxes to Ada County and Idaho. But 303D not adversely affect the neighbors, they already have, they continue to, and this will be worse. If the first plan was executed, we'd be happy. Barbara Fairbanks and I bought this property at the end of 2018. And then we almost immediately received their proposal. And Diana, if you can go to slide two now. We received the notification that this is what they wanted to. Yep. Actually, that's not the slide I expected, but that's okay. Um. If the original executed plan had been done, we'd be looking at vines, just as John pointed out. Um, and that patio and tasting room, it's not just a patio and tasting room. That is a restaurant, an outdoor event center, a concert location, an advertised food truck location. Slide two, this has been a slow accident, taking two years. Commissioner Coolio, who you gave a plaque to earlier, back in 2019, asked them, is this all that you want? Five parking spaces, one ADA, using the existing barn, and they said yes. And he said, well, now don't be coming back asking for more. Less than two years later, they came back and asked for a dramatic eye popping expansion. In that same hearing, Commissioner Birch, the single no vote on this plan, was chastised by the other commissioners. For his specific knowledge of this property. They actually said to Commissioner Birch, we all can't have an intimate knowledge of each property. Birch, who knew it well, voted no. Let's go to slide three, please. I'm going to discuss that original plan, let's start there, slide four, please. This is what originally was proposed and passed. That section D, the purple section, that's, would have been a vineyard. And that pink reddish one, Pinot Noir, vineyards. 3.3A agriculture, winery, vineyards, we wanted that. We would be euphorically happy if that buffer was planted between our property, which is residential, and their property, their grazed land. Elegant. Just like the letter that is in for the favor of the Buchers. A person who lives eight miles away says he dreams of wineries, we do too. Now, let's talk about typos for a moment. I don't know if that's a typo or not, Dude DeWalt with a D. I'm going to bring up typos again in a minute. Let's go to slide five, please Diana. In early 2019, we didn't complain one word about what they had. But we were unaware that they could send neighbors a proposal amended prior to approval. And so things were added. I'm okay with promoting wines, but it's how they've done it that's the difference. Let's go to slide number six, please. Appeasable use of our residential property, the Kling Estates, goal 3.3D. They've put up, you know, you don't have to ask for buildings, you just put up white plastic tents, they've done it. They have music performers with speakers the sizes of suitcase that are amplified. When called, the phone response was, no, nothing we could do. Now, on their plan, they asked for little JBL speakers the size of soda cans. They didn't identify that you could have up to 100 of those in series. They didn't ask for suitcase sized speakers like there that circled in green. I guess you don't need approval for it. Parking spaces, they've asked for approval of parking spaces, but they just park anywhere and everywhere as many cars as they wish. Right up against our property line, let me remind you of 3.3D. Slide seven, please. Tasting room where the original vineyard would be. Um. That's right up against our property line, that tasting room with that patio. And what's going to happen at that location is music and lights. And now, perhaps up until 10 PM. Notice that everything is south, 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 south and one north. So everything is closer to the residential Kling Estate. Let's talk about that 12,800 production facility. It was Brent Danielson who discovered, gee, if you take the length and width and multiply, it's not a 10,000 square foot facility that they applied for. It's 12,800. That's a mistake of over 25%. I would have thought when they signed their application, that they would have used a calculator. The access road on the property line, January 14th, Trey Booker said it was a fire break. Now, I called him at the end of that meeting on January 14th. Mr. Booker called me back February 14th, 30 days later. And he told me that was a typo. So let me get this straight. You're going to type fire break and it comes out access road? I'm not sure that's a typo. All of this is south, remember 3.3D. Only one thing is north, 4,000 square foot material storage building. January 4th, Mr. Booker testified that they couldn't build north of the gas line easement. Wait a minute, that 4,000 square foot building is north of the easement. Can we go to slide eight? Here's a visual representation of what's been approved since the original time. 400% increase in building, and I don't care about parking. There are private airports that have less parking space than these guys have been approved. But they didn't use eight parking spaces. We've got pictures of 30 to 50 cars. 3.3A isn't being complied with, they haven't planted a single vine in that two years. February 14th, I asked Trey to show me, oh, he testified on January 14th that they had paid for vines. When asked and challenged by the commissioners, why haven't you planted? Booker said, well, it was late in the season, then there was COVID, but I have paid for vines. So on February 14th, I asked Mr. Booker for a copy of the receipt, he refused. I asked him again, he refused. I asked him again, he refused. It makes me wonder why. Slide nine. Oh, 3.3 do not adversely affect the neighbors, it's not the vines, it's the marketing that's the problem. Under the banner of a winery, this is a concert venue. Under the banner of a winery, it's an advertised food truck parking lot. We can only guess what's next, weddings, retirement parties, cooperative rollouts of other products, clowns. And to channel a commissioner from January 14th. Ferris wheels, circus, midways, comedians, it'd be funny if it weren't true. Now, I think of poetry readings and book signings, that'd be nice. But what if it were 500 people? They don't count. I use some absurdity to explain the absurdity we have abdored. Food trucks, outdoor amplified speakers the sizes of suitcase, parking far exceeding the approval of the plan and the hours. If this was planning, and by the way, they approached the planning commission, got approval to plant vines. Now, they want to build a. Event center slash tasting room. Right up against our property, there would have been vines there, they would have had to turn them up. That's not careful planning. And the hours, unsafe and unthoughtful. This is a facility that serves alcohol. And, under what's approved, serving till seven, eight, eight thirty, nine, nine fifteen, nine thirty, nine forty-five, 10 o'clock. And please drive safely on State Highway 16 in the dark. Really? Slide 10, please. One of the advantages the Buchers have is outside of Monday through Friday, nine to five, Ada County compliance folks aren't available. The burden on compliance is on us, the neighbors. I'm going to use a phrase from the movies, lights, camera, action. Here come the 14,000 Lumen hypercon lights. Now, they're applicant, they're going to have to get it approved, but. Look at that picture, it shows rain and reflection. What is going to happen on our property and theirs will be a glow in the neighborhood obscuring the sky, light pollution we don't have now. But it's coming to our residential neighborhood, remember 3.3D adverse effects. Slide 11, please. There are things that they do that aren't on their plan and the loophole of vagueness regards sound and lights and screening from us. Counting the number of attendees, all combined to create huge peril, 3.3D. 3.3D protections are already gone with how they've operated and it'll be much worse if this plan is allowed to go forward. Let me read Mr. Birch's statement. And our fear is that Mr. Birch is right, well, maybe. He said that this expansion, a three ring circus, he said they applied for a pup tent. And they were getting a three ring circus approved. Would no doubt negatively impact the quality of life to King, Kling estate residents, that's us. I'm not afraid they're going to do a three ring circus, I'm afraid they're going to do Disneyland. My claim here is, is that they want to do everything but be a winery, they want to be an event center. That may have been a typo or misspoke, but their landscape architect Jay Gibbons on January 14th said, events center. Slide 12, please Diana. The production facility is in the wrong place, instead of being visible from the road with those lights, those hypercon, 14,000 Lumen lights. It should be new north, northeast, why not co-located with that 4,000 square foot building north of the gas line easement? If you want 3.3D to be met, real planning would put the buildings up there. The existing tasting room would be used, no new tasting room would be allowed. In their application, they said 30 patrons a day spread out throughout the day. And their current tasting room, a converted barn, holds 36. Why do they need a new tasting room? They want it to hold events. Slide 13. Deception. January 14th, when asked how far the tasting room was from the neighbors, Trey Booker said 200 to 250 feet. He was intentionally answering the existing tasting room distance when the commissioners were specifically asking. when the commissioners were specifically asking the new tasting room distance, which is just 25 feet away. A patio where lights, sound, and crowds will be where the noise and lights will be in our backyards. And with all due respect to the years of service to Ada County that Diana has presented, Diana, I read your report and you're incorrect. 3.3D is not met with a new tasting room and patio. Worse, the Bookerts think of it as an event center. I've owned property in 15 states. I'm used to setbacks. I can't believe that when you build next..."
How much time does he have left?
Yes, uh, two minutes left.
Might wanna pause that.
You have, uh, you have a little over, a little under three minutes left.
All right, um, let's go to slide 14 then. They're not a restaurant. Why are they given 26 spaces as a restaurant? They're not an outdoor recreational facility. Why are they given 34 spaces as an outdoor recreational facility? Why not airport parking? They're not an airport. You get my point. And they already parked 35, 40, 50 cars on their property, right on the fire break that really is a utility road. "We've all been deceived in the accuracy of the Bookerts' application for expansion." You too, Diana. 3.3 has been trampled upon. Slide 15, please. Move the buildings north, cut the parking spaces. Let's make them a winery that we wanted them to be. Everybody dreams of pleasant neighbors. You're gonna ask me how we get along with the Bookerts. Let me illustrate. When we made this appeal, we have to post signs talking about the appeal. I called Trey. He said, "Let me think about it." 30 minutes later, I called and he said, "Why would I help you?" Then we called Ada County Highway so we could post signs. They said, "No, you can't do it." I called Diana, explained that we were in a no-man's land. She called Trey. Now, I don't know what she said to Trey, but Trey left me a message saying, "Go ahead, post the signs." Did he have a change of heart? I can assure you not. I don't know what Diana said, "Maybe be a good guy." Or, "Don't worry, nothing will change." I have no idea. But I called Trey January 14th. He called me back on February 14th, 30 days later. Was that because of the appeal? We have no desire to be anything but good neighbors. We wish they were. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Is there any questions of Mr. Hill from the commissioner?
I don't have any for Mr. Hill. I probably will for the Bouchards, if they're here, to provide testimony.
Okay. Is there, uh, others that want to testify on the application? Okay. I see it's a team effort.
It is. Is this okay here?
Yeah.
Yeah, just make sure you talk into the microphone.
Yeah, it's fine. Sure.
Take your mask off.
How much time we got?
How much time do we have, commissioners?
Well, we normally take three minutes, but we can, we can extend it because we did the other. How much time you need?
Uh, three, four minutes.
Okay. We'll, uh...
We have questions too.
We'll do four minutes, and then we have questions, we'll do four minutes.
Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask, since there's two new commissioners who weren't here for your previous application, if you could give kind of the story of, you know, what we missed earlier? We have read the documents and all that, but just give us the overview of what this was supposed to be and what your plans were in the very beginning.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'll include that in my speech. Thanks. Commissioners, good evening. My name is Johnna Buchert, and my husband Trey and I own Dude DeWalt Sellers. Our property is located at 544 Highway 16, just outside of Eagle. Jay Gibbons, our landscape architect, is gonna be here online and is prepared to offer additional support and answer any questions that you have regarding our application. We opened our facility in May of 2020. Despite COVID, the business has actually been successful. But the room that we have to work with, which is approximately 1,800 square feet, is too small for a combined tasting room and a production area. We knew that this would be the case when we applied for the first conditional use permit, but we didn't really wanna invest a large sum of money right off because we wanted to test the community's response to our product first, before we did that. I don't think we ever, when we came to the first conditional use permit, promised anybody that we'd never grow and that we'd never come back and that we'd never do anything different. At that time, that first CUP permit back in, in 2019, you know, we wanted to start small. Many of you would if you were starting with a business and then wanting to expand it if it proved to be something that you could, you know, see that there would be a future for. Our current production is 1,250 cases a year. This production is much too small to be profitable. The production of 10,000 cases a year would still be considered a small winery in this business. So more production is necessary to make the business viable. To make this jump in production and increase in the production space and the other modifications that we've outlined in the master site plan are necessary. Planning and zoning approved us in January, indicated that our application was consistent with comprehensive plan and as well as the zoning regulations. And they also put 40 conditions of approval on us, which we feel adequately addressed our neighbors' concerns. My husband in his presentation is gonna address the neighbors' specific concerns, but I wanted to talk to you a little bit about what's been going on just in general with the wine industry in Idaho.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to pause you. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We have Mr. Fier, Fieroni, Fieroni, however you pronounce it, Mr. Hill. They've gone off.
I still have them.
Okay, so because they need to be listening to the testimony. Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
You should know that we've gone from 11 wineries in 2002 to 65 today. In 2008, you should know that the economic impact study done for the state of Idaho was that the wine industry was committing, was, um, was helping our economy by 73 million. It's grown today to 210 million. That's how important the wine industry has gotten over the last few years. In 2015, a new American viticultural area was formed in the Eagle foothills. Some of this lies in Ada County. Dude DeWalt Sellers lies within this area that is the newly federal designated area. We joined two other wineries in the Eagle area, Three Horse Ranch and Soul Invictus. The three wineries are now working together to promote themselves as the Eagle foothills wine trail. Two more wineries are also coming to the area. Just a couple of weeks ago, if you were reading the paper, it was reported that Spokane investors have purchased Flat 16 and that they are re-establishing a winery there. This property is less than, like, within a mile of our property and is, and the neighbors are in between that. So there's gonna actually even be another winery, just really close down the road. It should also be noted that another winemaker has just purchased land in Ada County near Three Horse Ranch and wants to establish a winery there. So you're gonna see a quick explosion here of the number of wineries in the area. We continue to see that more and more acreage of vines are being, continuing to be planted in the Eagle foothills AVA. It's because it's designated as an AVA. It is a special, special thing to be designated. What are the positive effects of all of this? Well, viticulture preserves agriculture. It promotes agrotourism. It provides jobs. It contributes to the tax base. It encourages culture. We've also seen an increase in the quality of life for many. Maybe not the two of our neighbors, but for many. And since our opening, we have witnessed many birthdays and adversaries, proposals, and more at the winery, as that we see that this become, has become a place where people celebrate life. I'm asking you to consider that this property is located on a 35-acre parcel. The property is located on very busy Highway 16. There are no neighbors on three sides of our property. And the placing of a production facility and the establishment of parking at the bottom of the hill will move much of the traffic away from the neighbors, and this seems to be a major complaint. So much of this parking, you know, that they're seeing on the top, I mean, we feel like we've reacted actually fairly quickly to try to remove that parking and put it down at the bottom of the hill where it won't bother them, while it will be farther away from them. They're just angry and, uh, I guess that's all I can say about that. The vineyard will be a beautiful place when planted this spring. And while, yes, there's gonna be some equipment that's utilized in the planning process, it's a small price to pay for the long-term gain of having beautiful vineyards for a lifetime.
Okay, we appreciate your comments. If you could wrap it up, you're, we've gone quite a bit over your, your, a lot of time. Appreciate it.
Sure. I was just gonna, I guess I'll just, I can address them specifically, but I think I just wanted to leave you with this. And that is that this is an area where you see endless sunsets. We see incredible views of the Boise foothill, uh, the Boise foothills, Bogus Basin. We're on the very, very outskirts of Eagle City limits. Like, we're, we're way out there, like, we're heading to Firebird Raceway. Where, if anywhere, would there be a more appropriate place to put a winery?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please hang around. We may have some questions for you specifically.
Well, Mr. Chair, I could probably ask a question.
Oh, do you have a question of a...
Well, maybe your husband will cover this in his presentation, but, um, I appreciate what you said, but I don't think a lot of it is addressing the concerns of your neighbors.
He will.
Listening to them, it sounds like their concern is not with winery or even necessarily expanded production. It's that you're operating more as a event center slash restaurant than a winery. And you didn't cover a lot of that in your, your testimony. So if your, if your husband is gonna address that...
Well, I'll address some of that, Commissioner, if you'll allow me to. We are not an event center. Under the code, it requires a separate conditional use permit. We have actually had a meeting with Planning and Zoning earlier and with Diana to talk about the possibility of doing that. We've decided not to do that. We haven't, we haven't chose to file for that event center. Right now, if we wanted to have a winery that was commercially related to our, our business, we could obtain a permit, we could apply for a permit, and we can have a permit for a wine or for a wedding to be had at our place. But as it stands, we understand that we cannot have weddings, and we haven't had weddings. I also would just say a caveat that I don't, I, we had one event there that they were very upset with. We had a vow renewal ceremony for our tasting room manager. It was not a commercial event. It was a private event. It wasn't a wedding. It was just, you know, we had a meal. They did renew their vows, so I guess it's pretty close to a wedding. But it was a private event. And I would like to think that I could still have a private event because this is my residence and I live there too.
So that's sort of a one-off, is what you're saying?
I'm sorry?
That was sort of a one-off, just a isolated incident?
Yes, that was one isolated incident. We do not make a practice of doing this. It was something we were doing for our friend. And that's what we did. They were greatly upset with that. We've had music out there. They did contact their tasting room. They had our telephone number directly. We talked to them on the phone on a regular basis. We text. They, they know who we are. They chose to call our tasting room manager, who knew nothing about how to handle the music and how loud it was. They could have called us directly. They should have. But they called the tasting room manager, and our, honestly, our manager didn't know how to respond that. So she said, "Gee, you know, it's on a, it's on a speaker and we don't have control of that. That's our, our musician that's doing that." Well, Trey understood, and, and she was, he was, our tasting room manager told Trey immediately after that. He said, "Hey, turn the music down." And we did. And we've, we've every time have, have tried to address their issues, address their concerns, and they just continue to be angry.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So how many outdoor events have you had since inception?
Uh, we just actually did our first report. We have on April 14th and April, wait, 21st and 22nd, sorry, today's the 14th. We have a wine pickup party. Those were part of the events that we're supposed to require and report to the director in condition of approval number 26. We put that in. We will have a winemaker dinner. We haven't had any winemaker dinners yet. We haven't since our January hearing had a wine pickup party yet. So based on the condition of approval number 26, we really haven't had an event yet. So our first will be...
Since the first of the year?
Yes, so since...
What's a wine pickup event?
So when you are a club member at our winery, and there are four different club members, memberships that you can, you can have. And then during COVID, it's been sort of difficult because we've been just giving individuals personal charcuteries and their wine boxes. But you, you choose what kind of a club you want. You can be a three-bottle club, you can be a six-bottle club, or you can be a 12-bottle club. But whichever club you choose, we're gonna put all those, we, we ship you or we give you those quarterly when you sign up for our club memberships. In return, we give you deep discounts and we give you perks. We let you have special seating at the, at the winery. We, um, we give you discounts. We treat you better. I don't know. You're a VIP at our winery when you're one of our wine, wine club members. So quarterly, we will have these wine pickup events where we will put together their, their packets. Like, if it's a three-bottle club, we're shipping or giving people three-bottle clubs quarterly. So each quarter, we will be having those events. The, the ordinance specifically says wine club events, winemakers dinners, things like that. Those are the things that we are considering events. And so that's, our first one is gonna be on the 21st and 22nd.
Since the, since the first of the year?
Since the first of the year, since this last hearing in January when we were approved.
Okay. Yes, ma, yes, Commissioner.
Okay, so just to follow up, a simple question. How many events, outdoor events, private or public, have you had since you started?
Since I start, we started in May. We've had four, probably pickup parties. Well, this'll be the fourth because it's just coming on a year now. We haven't actually been open an entire year. We've had those. We've had...
No winemaker dinners?
Yeah, we've had no winemaker dinners. So really, it would just be the pickup parties. And we did those over a period of days because of the limitation that, you know, we didn't wanna have people in. So now, what we're asking is people to actually take reservations so that we can limit the amount to 50 people. So that's what we're doing.
You mentioned a vow renewal. Was that indoor or outdoor?
That was outdoor.
Okay, so four pickups plus the vow renewal.
But I wasn't considering that an event because that was a private thing. Not a, not a...
The question was private or public?
Or public. So yes, that would include that, for sure.
Five total?
Including the one that's coming up on, in April, yes.
The four without the April one?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Do you have anything else, Commissioner?
No, we'll, we'll hear from your next witness here.
Okay.
Now, you have questions, Chair?
You wanna wait, you want, for now?
Yeah, please.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you. So out of the 34, I think it's 34.6 acres, how many are planted, how many acres are planted in grapes?
Right now, we have a little over three acres that are planted in grapes. Total, we can get about nine acres of plantable area into the 34 acres that make good grape ground. We were planning on this last spring, which was referred to from the previous discussion, putting in about five more acres of grapes. And we had grapes on order, and because of COVID, we put a halt on it. So we better wait and see what shakes out, like a lot of businesses did. We currently have planned, and, and if Mr. Hill and Mr. Furino know that our ground's all prepped, it's tilled up, it's ready to be planted. Wouldn't put that kind of money into it if we weren't planning on putting grapes. And, uh, Mr. Hill's correct. I would not share our receipts with him for grapes that were purchased, so...
So I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, if this started out to be a vineyard, and that's what people thought, and it was a small sort of country kind of style, you know, wine tasting, why for three acres of grapes would you need 12,000? You're gonna put in a production? Let me make sure this is right. You're gonna add 10,000-square-foot production facility, 4,000-square-foot equipment storage facility, 4,000-square-foot material storage facility, and then the additional parking and the additional wine tasting room? So I'm just curious, with three acres of grapes, why would you need all of that?
Maybe you can go back a little bit to Commissioner Davidson's question. How do we get started in this thing here? Because that'll kind of answer that. When we started back in 2011, for the fun of it, we just wanted to make a little bit of wine. And we started with five-gallon buckets, and we made a little bit. We were able to go through the fermentation process and make a little bit of wine. And then the next year comes along with a new set of grapes. We say, "Hey, we can get a little bit better." But when we did that, we had no grapes planted on our ground. We went across the valley and we bought grapes from other, other vineyards. And every year, we've continued to grow a little bit, and this whole thing has just kind of evolved. We never had any intent of ever becoming a winery or getting into major production like we're starting to. So it's just kind of evolved, just kind of happened through friends pushing us and all. But one thing in the wine industry, there's very few tasting rooms or growers that produce all their grapes. Or not growers, but manufacturers. all their grapes, or not growers, but manufacturers of wine that produce all their grapes. A vast majority of the grapes are purchased through outside farmers.
I'm aware of that.
So we're in the same boat. We're buying a lot of grapes from, from the valley, or from Marcin area that we can this year. We've got grapes contracted in Washington. So we're going to be able to produce, or we need to produce, a lot more grapes than what we can grow on our property.
I understand that. But I, but I also go back to, what was the original story that you told the neighbors? You know, did they, did they envision that this was going to be a vineyard? Now it's going to be maybe, you know, a fraction of it?
Yeah, it was always going to be a vineyard, and always going to be a tasting room. We always told them we were going to have a tasting room.
That's different than these big, big outbuildings, though, that you have proposed here today.
Yeah, and, and things have changed, so, I mean, we've grown. I mean, it's really grown beyond what we had anticipated, and that's why we're, we've come back in for a...
Have you, have you talked to Mr. Hill about the proposals? He had, I think, three main proposals. Can you go back to those? Do you know what they are? So one, I think one was move the buildings to the south?
Yes, I, well, so I have talked to Mr. Hill, not talked to Mr. Furino about moving the buildings to the north. They wanted to move the buildings to the north. So Mr. Hill did call me, we talked about that. And the problem with going to the north is we've got a gas line through the property, it's very steep in that area. It would require a lot of, a lot of groundwork to get buildings over on the north piece of property. We do have a small shop or storage facility for nets and totes and stuff like that, we want to put back there on the north end. But beyond that, it's, it's, it's just a steep gully. So it doesn't work very well.
Okay.
So...
Go ahead, I'm going to continue to look at my questions.
So it's the topography is the issue, then?
Topography's a big issue. And what little good grape ground I do have, I want to try to preserve, too, for a vineyard.
Sure.
And some of that north ground is that.
Now, you indicated you're going to increase your case count from 1,250 cases to 10,000 cases?
Not immediately.
Well, not immediately, but is that why? You need the extra, extra buildings and whatnot?
The goal, someday, maybe. We'll see how, we'll see how it goes.
Okay, sure. All right. Go ahead, I'm sorry. Do you have more questions, Commissioner?
Not at this time. Well, let me go back, and I, I don't know where those three proposals are. So the one, the first bullet point was moving them all, right? And you're saying you can't do that because of topography, or would it be additional expense? It could be done?
Expense would be a big one, yes.
Have you...
Convenience, getting roads back in there. It's pretty steep and rugged on that part, so, and the property to the north of us is not BLM, it is also private ground. So, you know, someday, who knows, we could have people living back there. I don't know what the future is of that property.
So is there any BLM land that owns yours?
BLM sits to the east of us.
To the east of you. Is there any place else that you could move these buildings where they're not right up against your neighbors?
You know, within, within reason, we could move them in that same area, and maybe gain a couple hundred feet, you know, in the buildings from where they are right now. It's down low, it's right along busy Highway 16, and, you know, I think it's a great area. It sits about 120 feet below our homes. So it's, you know, it's just, it's kind of, to me, an ideal location. But, you know, within reason, we could probably move things around down on that bottom ground a little bit.
And then why, most wineries, I've lived in wine country most of my life, they do close at, at 5:00 or 6:00 at the very latest. Why 10:00 p.m.? And especially, you know, Highway 16 is probably, they have more fatal crashes on Highway 16 than any other. So I'm just really interested in, in why 10:00 p.m.?
So that was actually something that was added by one of the planning and zoning commissioners. He just says, how's 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. work? At that time, I don't think we were asking for that, but he said, you know, will you accept 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.? He said, sure, you know, whatever works. So that's how that one got in there. Right now, and, you know, I mean, if you look at our hours, we're open Wednesday through Thursday, 12:00 to 6:00, and Friday through Saturday, 12:00 to 8:00. Our music never goes beyond 8:00, it's usually 4:00 to 7:00 when we have it. It's, it's, you know, we're not open Sunday, Monday, or Tuesday right now. So there are three days of the week that we're not even doing anything out there. So it just doesn't seem like it's, you know, so much of a horrible thing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Well, you say that, but of course, your goal is to expand and be open as late, long, and seven days a week if you could. So I think your neighbors are more probably, at least from the testimony I heard, about the potential of when you expand in the future, that you'll be having, you know, loud outdoor events going till 10:00 p.m.
That's fair, and I...
But, I, I mean, I would encourage all of you to come out and visit us, and see how wild and crazy it really is. It's a lot gentler, I think, than what's been expressed here. So, anyway, that's...
All right. Well, unless there's any more questions, you have a presentation for us, just go ahead.
Well, I do. We covered some of that. My name is Trey Bueker. I'm John's husband, and we have two boys that are in the business with us, and so we're kind of a small family-owned business. We've lived out there for 19 years now on the property, for about 20. So we've, 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 we've spent some time on that.
You're almost native Ada, Ada Canyans.
You never are. I know they're going to see if we're here.
Two years, you're a native nowadays. All right, all right.
But occasionally, we do have live music. And like we talked about, it's generally just an acoustical guitar. And if we, if we were asked, and there's times I've asked them to quiet down, I'm very sensitive to the noise out there, so that's something we want to do. We live right on Highway 16, and I'm sure you guys are familiar with Highway 16. It's a major corridor, and it's only going to get busier, and it's noisy, and it's loud. We also are just a mile down the road from Firebird Raceway, which is also quite loud, and they'll go three days a week all summer long. And it, I kind of enjoy the sound myself, but it is a pretty big roar that goes on all day long. So we've got that. I know that...
How far are you from Firebird? Excuse me?
About a mile.
About a mile? Really?
Yep.
That's out there ways.
Yep, yep, we're out there ways, so we're right on the edge. I know the views from their property up to ours, the Fiorinas, has been a concern with our equipment and cars and everything else. There's a big line of trees right now that are mature trees, probably 40 feet tall, that line between us and them. Lighting is also a concern. Well, we've taken all those into account. And one of the things that we are proposing to do, in fact, we've already started on it, is we're going to build a berm between us, our place and their place, up, you know, four to seven feet, somewhere in that range, and it's going to be landscaped. We've already had that approved by P&amp;Z, and we've talked to the Fiorinas about it as well, and accepted feedback from them on what they'd like seen done on that. So we're trying to do things to mitigate the impact. I know that Mr. Hill has stated that he borders right next to us. Well, he does, but the only section is about, I don't, I don't know the exact distance, maybe 100 feet, all the way down on the highway where he borders his place. So his home is not next to our proposed tasting room, it's not even going to border any of our vineyard or any of that. He'll be able to see it, but it does not border it. So he's, he's down the hill a ways. John had talked a little bit about the production facility and why we're doing it, and I mentioned that we're down below about 120 feet. Again, we're trying to, trying to mitigate the impact of our production facility by putting it way down by the highway, in more of a commercial area. Parking, that seems to be a big one here. So we were originally given a minimum number of parking spaces that we need to, needed to achieve. But I can tell you, during our first CUP that we went through, parking was the number one thing talked about, parking, parking, parking. And I listened to the other hearings that were going on, it was always about parking. It's always been our interpretation that the more parking, the better. So as we can mitigate the impacts to the community from a safety standpoint, or whatever it might be. And I know that parking is my number one stress. When my parking lot gets filled up up there, it gets more stressful than anything, because I don't like people to have to find places to park. So what we're doing is we're going to put overflow parking down, all the way down by the production facility on the highway. So that if we get more people that happen to show up while we're open, I'm just going to divert them down there and say, you'll have to walk up. But at least I'm keeping them off the streets and off of our driveway, and hopefully off Highway 16 and, and all that. So, so that's a little bit on the parking. Might say, too, on the marketing and promotional events, we're talking about how it's been expanded from 12 to 24 events a year. Well, that is actually a new county ordinance for all wineries. So that's nothing that, you know, we're getting any special attention here on. So I wanted to point that out. Talked about the vineyard with you. The access road to the south side between our property seems to be a big thing. And yeah, it was never intended to be a road for people to drive on. Originally, that's been a fire line for years, for 20 years. And in fact, we've tried to keep that up even at the request of our neighbors. So even part of it still is just going to be a fire line. I'm going to have to take a tractor up there once in a while to access my vineyard and all. It's just, I mean, I don't know, it's part of it. We're going to have a berm over a long part of the property lines, that'll help mitigate Talked to property, not part of... The other thing here, I wanted to state here. I think it was submitted as part of the submittals earlier, not talked about today, but our property is not part of the appellant's subdivision. And the CC and ours that have been submitted by the appellant should be totally and completely disregarded. I mean, I'm not sure why that was submitted originally, because we are not in a subdivision. We are in rural Ada County. So we have basically two requests here. First of all, the requirement to notify the county for upcoming events be eliminated, which was condition number 26. Number two, the remaining CUP is approved, and the 39 remaining conditions for approval from January 14th hearing be approved today. So, you know, we talked a little bit about the septic system, too, and the septic system is a...
Okay, thank you. If you could, if you could wrap, wrap it up, then if we have any questions from...
That's it. I think he has wrapped it up.
Okay.
I think, yeah, I'm, I'm good.
Are there any questions from commissioners?
No additional questions at this time. Since you're here in person, I may have to come back up, but we have to give the other folks rebuttal.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Couple minutes rebuttal time, so that might raise further questions.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Hill or Mr. Fiorina, do you wish to offer any rebuttal?
Mr. Chair.
Absolutely, this is Mr. Hill. Do you hear me?
Sure, I can hear you fine.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, just want to verify if there are any others that we should provide testimony before rebuttal.
Oh, oh, you're right. I'm sorry, if there's others that want to provide testimony, are there any others in the room or online that want to provide testimony? Okay.
Chris Fiorino and Barbara Fairbanks both signed up for three minutes each.
So who's, who's up next, then?
Can you hear me?
Oh, that's Paul Hudson. Go ahead, Paul.
Okay, Barbara, are you ready? We'll, we'll, we'll start you three minutes right now. Go ahead, go.
I am absolutely ready. Can you hear me?
I can hear you fine.
Okay, great. I am Keith Hill's wife, agree wholeheartedly with his testimony, and won't repeat all those points, but want to give you my own additional thoughts. I'm a recently retired chemical engineer supervisor, who had a first career as a high school choir director, so I have worked very hard to earn my retirement and want to ensure that I can enjoy it. I believe strongly that the best predictor of future behavior is past behavior. The Buekers has, have consistently demonstrated no, no genuine interest in carrying out their plan without adversely affecting the adjacent uses. 3.3D and we, Kling Estates, are the adjacent uses. I feel unprotected from the actions of the Buekers that negatively impact the Kling Estates neighbors. In the rights comments that are on record, they talk about how the expansion will support their longtime dream of strengthening the wine region. Well, we think that's great, too. But we, as the adjacent uses, have longtime dreams as well of quiet and peaceful lives in the Kling Estates. You know, as a considered neighbor to many people over the years, it would never have entered my mind that it would be acceptable to expose my neighbors to my large backyard parties with amplified music, bright lights, food trucks, until 10:00 p.m. or even 8:00 p.m. on a regular basis. So why is this okay? The Wine Growers Association can say what they want about the winery increasing our property values, but I have little doubt that it will ultimately degrade our property values, and unquestionably, our quality of life. I have no confidence that the Buekers will comply anymore with the expansion conditions than they have complied with the original conditions. I believe based on past behavior that they will say what they need upfront to satisfy the county, and then proceed to do exactly as they please once the county's eyes are off of them. I don't want to spend my retirement having to prove over and over that they are continuing to ignore the conditional use that were granted. So I'm asking that you roll back this impending three-wing circus, and it does feel that way, in the ways that Keith and John Fiorino outlined, because there's no way to be detailed enough in the conditions, despite the good intent of the commissioners, to ensure that the Buekers won't find some loophole or just ignore the conditions to allow them to do what they want despite negative impacts on their near neighbors. Unfortunately, this is somewhat of a he said, she said. If the staff and decision-makers have not physically put their eyes on the subject properties to fully understand the situation and the layout, they will either believe the Buekers' denial and minimization about what's going on out there and what they really have planned, and you've heard some of that in their testimony tonight, or they will believe that the near neighbors' observations and negative experiences are evidence that Goal 3.3D is just not being built. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Who's next?
Would you submit to a question?
Yeah, we can take a question.
Absolutely.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Davidson.
Hi, Ms. Fairbanks. So to summarize, would you say your, your number one, your most pressing complaint relates to the noise issue?
I would say yes, the noise, but the lights as well. I, I just came from working in a production facility, and I know how bright the lights need to be outside. And you saw the, the picture in Keith's presentation. That's, that's going to be up in the sky, or up above the building and the trees. That's, that's something that's a big concern to me as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, thank, thank you. And who's up?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who's up next?
This is Jay Givens.
Jay Givens? All right, Jay. We can hear you fine. Little, little lever's a little...
He's on there twice, maybe that's causing an echo. You see his...
Oh.
I'll feed that.
Yeah, we, we're getting some reverberations and echo, if you could...
Well, he's, somehow he's on there twice.
You're on there twice for some reason, Jay.
Yep, one, one second.
If you could eliminate the other one, that'd help.
This is an issue.
Well, it doesn't sound like it's echoing right now. State your name and address as a test here.
Jay Givens. South Buckenberry, 2002, South Vista, Boise, Idaho.
All right. I think you're okay now. Go ahead.
I'm Lasky Bartek. I've been called out a couple times through the testimony, through the appeal. So I also want to state that I have the cab drawing up in front of me. If you want actual distances from facilities, from any site amenity that's on a master site plan to the property lines, I can give that to you. The parking calculations that were given on the master site plan, as you know, there is no specific parking calculation for a winery in Ada County code per se. So what we showed on the master site plan was as examples. If it was a use that was a pub or grill, this many spaces would be required. If it was a warehouse, this would be required. It was not intended as what needs to be for this application. So those are a little out of context. We just want to provide adequate parking for the use. And as Trey, the owner, spoke, you know, we've got overflow parking. We want to keep them off the perimeter, close to the neighbors, and be able to facilitate any users in the future. The other question is, my testimony from January 14th in regard to an event center, it's not an event center. That's a separate CU. I was clarifying that this is not a request for a use center. This is a master site plan, a CU for an expansion of a winery. But the master site plan requires basically what are all the future potential uses, regardless of what's allowed by this specific conditional use, and a space relationship to where those particular buildings, facilities may lie. And so that's what we showed. The septic, the proposed septic for the future tasting center or tasting room, that's not 25 feet from the property line. It's not 40 feet from the well. It's 156 feet from the property line. The square footage of the production facility listed on the plan is 10,000 square feet. It's 119 by 78 feet, which is just slightly less than 10,000 feet, square feet, as listed on the plan. It's not 14,000 square feet. There's a lot of drama going on, and I'm just a resource in support of the Buchards' efforts.
Okay, Mr. Givens, if you could wrap it up?
Other than that, yeah, as Trey said, we have been asked to provide a screening berm from adjoining property, and we have that worked up. It hasn't been approved by the director to date, but it will be in the future. We want to be good neighbors, and, you know, this is appeal. We hope that you will support the Buchards. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there others that wish to testify? Who would be up next then? Paul Hudson. You're up. You have three minutes. You have three minutes, Paul. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Paul Hudson. I live at 8604 West High Ridge Lane with my wife Sheila. We've lived here since 1978. The Buchard's original proposal, we sat down in their front room, and they said, hey, we want this, we've got this shed here. We had like six parking places, including ADA, two additional employee parking, and we're gonna do a vineyard. Absolutely great. Both Mr. and Mrs. Buchard in the original hearing, I'm sorry, I'm talking fast, said it doesn't affect the property values. It's gonna help the property values. They had a neighbor that came and testified that neighbor lives over 2,000 feet away. So he's not impacted. Mrs. Buchard today talked about how everybody's angry, angry, angry. Well, yes, actually, they are very angry, because what they started with was they actually vineyarded with a small tasting room, and now they want essentially an event center. It's interesting, in the zoning meeting of 124 or 114, the board member, the only board member, James Birch, was the only one familiar with Erie. Had lived in Erie 20 years. And he was familiar with the property, both properties. And specifically, he stated, he said in 19, at the hearing in 2019, they presented what he considered a pup tent. Now they wanted a circus. He went on to say, he said, he said that specifically, he said that if they were allowed to do this, it would irreparably harm the value of our properties. That's a matter of record. That was the people that on the zoning commission said. All the other people, no one else was close. I am a realtor. I have been a realtor in the state of Idaho since 1971. I'm a Realtor Emeritus. This takes the quality and experience I've had. And in my professional opinion, if you allow what the planning is only authorized, you will be devaluing the property of the Fiorinos by at least $150,000. What became a small winery was pointed out, it's interesting, by one of the female ladies there. I don't know if it was a commissioner or not. They have three acres of grapes. They might have a maximum of nine. And what they want is, whether they call it entertainment center or whatever, it is a event center. My recommendations are that you, if you do that, we would love to have the vineyard next to the property line. That won't impact the Fiorinos or Keith or Barbara. I would recommend that you don't allow any improvements other than agricultural within 250 feet of the property, as they have exceeded things enormously. Put a maximum of 30 people, and they differentiate, just one last thing. They differentiate between 24 approved meetings and private parties. It's all the same event as far as the neighbors are concerned. And then reduce the hours and set a specific noise level that would shut them down if they exceed that. That's what I'm asking.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hudson. Is there...
And I stand for any questions.
Okay, is there any questions for Mr. Hudson?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson, can you state very specifically what factors you believe are leading to the, or would lead to the decrease in the property value?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. If it was a vineyard, and it would improve that if it was a vineyard. If it was like next to your home, or mine, or the Fiorinos, or that, if you have a commercial, it is a, any way you look at it, whether you call it winery or whatever, based on the percentage of grapes and what the entirety of the operation is, it is a commercial operation. So if you take a commercial operation that can operate seven days a week, up to 10 o'clock at night, that definitely has an impact on the quality of life and consequently, the value, the real actual market value of that property, or any other property.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions of Mr. Hudson?
Well, let me get, just even a little more specific with you. If they were operating till 10:00 PM every night, but you couldn't hear anything, then that wouldn't affect the property value. So what specifically, I'm looking for, you know, noise...
Okay, so specifically, if you look at the master plan as presented, and I think Jay has that information, he can give the exact numbers. Mr. Buchard said originally on January 14th that nothing would be within, no building would be within 250 feet. That's a matter of record. He said that. And then if you look at that master plan, there is a proposed wine tasting. And Mrs. Buchard said, well, you know, we're just getting approved. We may not build it till the future. But if you look on that plan, that is much closer. And then additionally, it has a patio as an extension of that that comes to my, the best of my calculation, within 35 feet of the property line. Now, if you take all other than agricultural improvements and move them 250 feet away, I don't think anyone's gonna complain about that. But that's not what the planning, that's not what they asked for. That's not what the master plan calls for, and that is, you know, that is what we are contesting.
So just to further summarize, the bullet point is the proximity is the biggest issue you see?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah. And then, and I think the thing is, and I think the county, yeah, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Are there any other questions of Mr. Hudson? If not, who's next?
Just everyone I have online.
So there's no one else that wishes to testify? Correct?
Rebuttal?
Okay, we'll give two rebuttals of three minutes each. Go ahead, Mr. Hill.
All right. Now, you certainly gave the Buchards a lot of time. On January the 14th, they got their 15 minutes, and we only got three. I know there's time for questions, but I'd like to see it even-handed here.
You got two 15 minutes, sir.
We paid two fees. They just misrepresented the number of events. They said, well, maybe three or four. They had 12 events in the last year, from May 2020 to December 2020, 12 events. Food truck, music, guitars, amplified speakers. They had 12 events. It is a twisting of the facts that they just presented regards to the number of facts. It was their plan that says it's a 10,000-foot square facility. It was your own Brett Danielson who did the math and said, whoops, that's 12,800. And then here's something else. Okay, they haven't planted more grapes, and we'd love to see that. And just what Mr. Hudson described, with from Highway 16 to the eastern border, two, 300 feet of grapes, we'd love to see that. They want to build this huge production facility, and they buy grapes from other locations. Well, now that they want to do that, I've got something else that I think ought to happen, because right now, there's no provision that they can't rent that facility out to other winemakers to produce wine, and that's a likelihood. And to the commissioner who was asking the question of Mr. Hudson, it's not till 10:00 PM. That production facility is 24/7/365 authorized. They can make wine at midnight and 3:00 AM and light up their hypercon lights. Then Jana says, it was the planner, not our fault, who suggested 10 to 10. And we're only open a few days. There's a minimization by the Buchards is what they're doing. They present themselves as peaches and cream. And I gotta tell you, if you were their neighbor, you, Ms. Commissioner, you, Mr. Commissioner, you, Mr. Commissioner, if you were their neighbor, Diana, if you went out there and stood on the property and watched and looked, you'd see. That's my rebuttal.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fiorino, do you wish to rebut?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hello?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
John, they can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I'd like to rebut a few things. First of all, I'd like to talk about the trees. We live in a fire area. A few years back, we had a major fire that actually burned down several homes along the ridge. And in fact, not long ago, the Buchards had a fire that they started that burned down towards our house and along the gully. Now, those trees, by the fire department's request, had to be trimmed up at least three feet or more above the ground. So they provide no blockage and bound or vision because they had to be trimmed up for safety. Second point I'd like to make is Mr. Givens says that the measurements were wrong. Well, I have a full-size, full-scale drawing, and that's where I got the measurements. So if he's got something different, I would be more than interested to see his drawings and compare his to the measurements. Next point is we've had several events, many more than four, where there were significant numbers of cars, and I have pictures of them. So all you have to look is at the back of my presentation, you'll see some of those pictures. I can provide more pictures if you like, because we take them every time there's an event. So I know there's been more than 30 cars parked several times. They've had two major events. One was called, I believe, Zip Tech, and one was called Thin Blue Line, where they were significant events. So when you look at all of this, things are being understated significantly. They're saying that we're overstating, and I'm saying that they're understating a lot of what's going on up there, and I have pictures to prove it.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay. Thank you. All right. One second here. Okay. There are no more public testimony, is there? Anybody else want to speak?
No.
No, we can't do, no, we can't.
Mr. Chair, Richard, were there any additional documents that were presented here that we need to add into the record?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I don't believe there was anything new.
You think there is?
Diana, do you know of anything?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I will add their PowerPoints into the record.
So that would be exhibits? Okay, but we'll need to make that a note on the record.
We'll make that on the record then.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
She had mentioned a letter from property owner Hanson, I think. I don't recall seeing that.
Harris? Was it Harris?
Hanson or Harris?
Yeah, we didn't have that.
Or property owner?
Was that an email? We didn't have that in our packet.
Okay. I'm now going to close the public hearing. Is there discussion from the board?
Sure. Who wants to start? You want to start, Ryan? Mr. Davidson?
Mr. Davidson, you want to start? Have a... If you don't, we'll go on.
I can go ahead.
Go ahead, Commissioner Kenyon.
Well, in situations like this, you know, we always try to respect everybody's property rights and try to come to some collaborative solution. And so in this case, you know, this is, I really understand both sides and what they're both trying to accomplish. And I'm hoping that if I can add a few conditions of approval, we might start to get there. So bear with me, Mr. Chair, but I am going to, I'm gonna be, I think, making a motion where I would be looking at letting them go forward, but with quite a few conditions of approval. For example, I think closing at 6:00 PM, I lived in wine country for 12 years. Closing at 6:00 PM is very, very common. I don't know of any...
So that'd be in addition to the three pages of conditions that are already on the record?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, it would be. So closing at 6:00 PM. I would also be adding one that they need to have setbacks of 250 feet from any other property line, that they would need to build a berm, minimum of six and a half feet. And I think Mr. Buchard said that they were going to do that anyway. That also, I think the lighting, I don't know what the wattage is, but I looked at those pictures, and the lighting that they're putting in tends to be more for a production facility. And I think this is where they're going, is they're turning a winery, a rural winery into a production facility. So I really want to take a look at limiting the production and storage square footages and the lighting around those. I don't know if I can do that tonight. I really feel like, has staff gone out and actually looked at any of the property too? Be a question for Richard.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, Kenyon, I have been to the property.
Okay.
And so I am aware of where their existing facility is at and their existing parking.
From what you were able to observe, is there, would there be any problems with 250-foot setback?
Along the southern and the eastern, I don't think there would be. You have Highway 16...
Right, Highway 16 excluded, but the other three sides.
And the BLM on the other side, or I think BLM is on the eastern side. But any property owners other than BLM, which is not a problem. There is the pipeline, and they have to follow the regulations for their setbacks from the pipeline.
Okay. And then on noise, what is the noise ordinance in the county versus the city? Is it different?
They have to shut down all music by 10 for any kind of event. We can ask for a noise study and base it on that.
Is there a decibel level for noise?
We do not have one.
Is there a limitation on the number of noise-producing events in the code?
In the code, yes, there is. It's 24 per winer.
And that's common. Yeah, right. So, Mr. Chair, so that's kind of where I'm going with this. If we were, I really do think that the Buchards started out with a nice idea of having a nice vineyard with a small kind of rural country wine tasting, and this has turned into a wine production facility with a sort of growing grapes on the side as not their main business, line of business. So I don't know, that's kind of where I'm headed, is the only way I would move forward with this is a lot of restrictions to make sure that we are not adversely impacting the neighbors.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just for clarification, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, for that motion, so staff can follow on. So you're recommending denying the appeals, but adding conditions? but adding conditions of approval to add a 6:00 PM close time? Now, the setbacks, the 250-foot setback from the south property line?
From all property lines, except for BLM and, and 16, where there's personal properties, where there's personal residents.
South and north property lines?
Yep, south and, mhm.
Adding a berm of six and a half feet along the south property line?
Around, I think it would be both, to prevent both-
South and north property lines, okay.
If that's what the two residents are, yep.
And then for lighting, if you could clarify that as part of your motion?
Yeah, for light, that's kind of where it gets technical, because again, the photos that were presented to us show really, you know, production glaring, you know, lighting. And so maybe this is something that we could look into a little bit further on what, if you have 250 setbacks and you've got the berms, I, I don't know about the lighting, how we could ma, you know, mitigate for that. I suppose we could take a look at not having, make a note of this, and we may not go there, but not having 24/7, 365 days a year production, but limiting production times. And so the lights then could go off on those production facilities at night, and maybe only have motion sensors to go on if somebody approached them. So they're not out there, you know, doing production, running these facilities, you know, midnight with bright lights on. So I think we would probably want to limit the production times to also end at 6:00. And then that would, that would eliminate the light problem.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, so that added condition would limit the production from 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to cease at 6:00 PM with the lighting being turned off at 6:00 PM?
Mhm, unless it, unless it's lighting for people walking around that work there for safety purposes. But, but not the bright lighting that you typically would do if you're running a production facility all night long.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I think that can clarify that motion for us, is, help us to track as you consider that motion.
So that's kind of where I'm headed.
Okay, do we have a second to that motion?
It's not really a motion, we're just deliberating still.
Okay, we're deliberating, all right.
Anything you guys would like to add or not?
I would actually like to hear from, from the Buchards on, on, on how your, the restrictions is being proposed, how that would affect their, their business.
You'll have to reopen the public hearing then.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, we can do that too.
My thought regarding Commissioner Kenyon's ideas were there, some on their surface I like better than others. I, I think I would be possibly amenable to some, but I would, I would prefer that they be proposed and then we take or request additional submissions from both sides on the proposed changes that Commissioner Kenyon has. And so it's a little more, you know, we're, we're catching them, you know, on short notice with these proposals right here. So me personally, I would prefer that we bring these back another, at another public meeting, giving both sides an opportunity to respond in writing to any additional-
I'd agree with that. I would second, I mean-
All right, so you're, you're making a motion to table it for, till our next meeting?
That we get on the record in our deliberations before we make that motion to table. Anything else other than the ones, conditions of approval that I added that you would want to modify or add to or delete?
I can't think of anything off, off the top of my head, although I'm wondering if we could leave it open? Or would the motion limit us to only what we come up with today?
No, it wouldn't. If we, if we table, if we table the, the issue until our next meeting, we could, we could say, "These are items that we want to talk about," and, and then potentially bring them back, correct? These are not, it's not part of a motion or anything, and it's not part of a condition of approval. It's just a framework to discuss, isn't that, is that correct?
Yes, I think so. I think this is complicated and complex enough that any-
Framework is to discuss and to, to work with the Buchards and, and the other, and the neighbors and so forth, and take, like, 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 for instance, the 250 feet, I don't know, is that going to push them back into, you know, the gas line or something? I don't, I don't know that.
No, but if you look at 250 feet, and this is your living room, and you're looking at-
Oh, I get that, I get that.
From the house. So, Mr. Chair, one of the thing that I would recommend that we do, now that I'm thinking about it, is to not have any blacktop parking lots. If they're going to want this many parking spaces, I think natural, they can do what we're doing like at Barbara Park. It can look very nice and be natural, so there's not a bunch of blacktop out there.
Well, those are items that we can, that we can discuss and then bring it back in a month. Is that correct, is that, would that work for, for you?
Yeah, I think you, since you'd have to kind of say, "Okay, we're going to reopen the public hearing and table this matter for consideration of what he just, what he just listed after talking with Commissioner Kenyon." And try to limit the discussion on that, because you don't want to have a whole, full-
Right, that's why I'm asking, if there's anything else that we want to consider, it needs to be put in now.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we would recommend, if you do move forward with tabling to, as, as counsel is, is described, open the public hearing for that, those topics and table.
You're going to need to tell me that again.
Mr. Chair?
Hold on.
Just as far as further deliberation goes, you know, I do want to point out again, our, our staff has recommended approval of this and has gone to some lengths to hear the concerns of the neighbors and try to implement some changes already in the conditional use process. So I, I think, you know, we're, we're on our way to finding common ground here. When I read the summary of the neighbors, they're not even asking that this not be a production facility and that the events be eliminated. They indicate that they just would like, you know, them limited in some fashion, but they're not objecting to events or the production facility. So I think we're, you know, we're getting closer to, to finding some common ground here that maybe coming back another, for another meeting may benefit us. But again, you know, I, I place a lot of reliance on staff, and they, they have reviewed this thoroughly, and I've recommended passing it.
Right. So.
So, Mr. Chair, I think I'll make the motion then to table 20-
You said we need to open a public hearing?
Yeah, you need to reopen it, yeah.
He closed it, and so I'm just going to go ahead and say you're going to reopen it.
We're going to open the public hearing on this matter.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Do a motion.
Yes, a motion to reopen.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to reopen the public hearing on 202002735-CU-A.
I will second that.
Okay, been moving seconded to open the public hearing on that item. All those in favor say aye, aye.
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 Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, yeah, I'll go ahead then, and I'll move to table the hearing to, what's the date?
May 12.
To May 12, I'm sorry, to May 12, to, in order to gather further information on the additional conditions of approval. Do you want me to list those, or you want to go ahead, you wrote them all down?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, I could reread those if you'd like.
That'd be great, yeah.
So what we heard, we're adding a condition to require a 6:00 PM closing time for events and production operations, a 250-foot setback from the south and north property lines, the installation of a six-and-a-half-foot berm from the south and north property lines, and then also lighting, production lighting or high-glare lighting being also turned off at 6:00 PM, not including any kind of ambient lighting for, for people walking on the site. And then there was also a discussion of no, of limiting the installation of blacktop for parking facilities.
Okay.
All those things that he said is in the motion then.
Is, is the motion still, or the process open to if we come up with something else, we could consider that as well, or are we locked into?
Trying to limit it to, to this, so it doesn't get out of hand, so.
Well, see, like, I mean, is it, it'd be 6:00 o'clock or 24 hours? I mean, if we later go, well, maybe 8:00 is better.
Well, I'd like, I'd like a question for counsel then. If we are just proposing this to, to, to give, give everybody a chance to get information, we can obviously change this at, at the public hearing on the 12th.
That's correct, as you hear evidence-
We hear evidence?
You can, yeah, you can-
We're going to, this is not set in stone, in other words, these are just additional, additional information we'd like.
We just don't want information from the outside about things that we're not considering to continue to come in.
Right, okay.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yes, you're good.
All right. Well, with that, we've-
You need a second?
We haven't voted yet, so all in favor of, uh-
You need to second it.
Oh, did you second it?
I'll second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to table until the 12th to get, gather additional information, as has been noted. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Are you sure? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I guess we need to close the public hearing too, don't we?
No, you're good.
We're good. All right, well, what we do without counsel by, give us directions?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add the exhibits. Exhibit number seven would be the document that Mr. Perioli submitted, the PowerPoint, and exhibit number eight is from Mr. Phil.
Okay, good enough, good enough.
I don't know if it's appropriate to encourage all parties, but now may be the time for extra diplomacy to, to work out any things.
What I would be disappointed is if we come up with these restrictions and then, and then we still get massive opposition. I would wonder about that.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay. Uh, moving on, we have- A comprehensive-
Is that a technical term?
That's a technical term, yeah. Well, it's been a long day, I don't know, how about you? It's only, what is it, 8:00? Oh, we're just getting started. Okay. I'll now open the public hearing on application number 202003073 CPA ZOACZ Ada County. Let's hear from staff.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners?
Yes.
Brent Moore with Ada County Film and Services. Reporting tonight is the Meridian Area City Impact renegotiation. Includes three application map amendment to adopt the 2019 Meridian Comprehensive Plan and Future Land Use Map. Zoning Ordinance Map Amendment for Proposed Changes to Area City Impact.
And a zoning ordinance text amendment for proposed changes to the Ada County zoning ordinance. So in 2019, Meridian adopted a new comprehensive plan following an extensive public outreach process in which over 5,500 residents participated through stakeholder interviews, focus groups, citywide events, and the public hearing process. So Meridian now requests the county adopt its 2019 plan to replace the 2011 plan, which the county currently utilizes within the Meridian Area City Impact. So due to the amount of change that has occurred between 2011 and 2019, staff finds the new plan will provide a better reflection of the current conditions and future goals of the city. So as part of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Meridian also adopted a new future land use map. And so on, on the left of the screen is the 2011 land use map we're currently utilizing. On the right is their new 2019 land use map. So while there have been some updates, the map is, is fairly similar to the one we're currently using. And then as Meridian also proposes changes to its area of city impact boundary, as shown in this map. So on this map, the orange areas actually represent the areas Meridian would like to remove from its area of city impact. The green areas are areas they'd like to add to their area of city impact. So this request is a little unique, and that Meridian is actually asking to reduce their area of impact by approximately two square miles. I'll give a brief overview of, of the changes. So this, along their northern boundary, they're proposing to transfer two, two areas to the Star Area of City Impact. This parcel up here is under common ownership with the parcels to the west, so it just made sense for them to develop together. And then on the northwest corner of Highway 16 and Chinon Boulevard, there's some property that would be more easily serviced by Star with the, the extension of Highway 16. Then along the southern boundary, there's a large area that Meridian's requesting be transferred to the Kuna Area of City Impact. Kuna has already annexed a lot of land within this area, but in discussions between the two cities, the boundaries you see here, what, what has been agreed upon between the two cities. And then there's a small parcel here, just south of the Boise Ranch Golf Course. It's located at the bottom of a hill, which makes it much easier for Boise to service if it's ever to develop. And then here's a piece Meridian would like to add to its area of city impact. And Meridian has actually already annexed this property as part of the Movado subdivision to the west. They annexed it so the subdivision could all develop within one city. And, and it's also the Ridenbach Canal separates it from much of the Boise Area of City Impact that kind of surrounds the property to the, to the east. Then there's just a, a small parcel here, Boise has already annexed on Fairview Avenue, which would be transferred to Boise's Area of City Impact. And then just a minor cleanup, kind of by Eagle Road and Wainwright Drive. The green parcel has already been annexed by Meridian, and the orange parcel has already been annexed by Boise. And I will just say, all of those, all of the adjacent cities are in agreement with the changes. And just say, as staff, we appreciate Meridian's willingness to cooperate with the neighboring cities to, to find boundaries they're all in agreement with. So regarding the zoning ordinance amendment, the following changes are proposed to Title IX of Ada County Code. First, just the adoption of Meridian's 2019 comp plan and updated area of city impact boundaries, which I just discussed. And then also the adoption of the following Meridian City Master Plans, the Water Master Plan, Collection System Master Plan, Pathways Master Plan, and Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And this is to ensure that future applications processed by Ada County within the Meridian Area of City Impact will not interfere with Meridian's future infrastructure plans. And then Meridian has also requested that the following applications be required to request annexation when contiguous to Meridian's city limits. So this will include conditional uses, master site plans, and master site plan modifications, one-time divisions, private roads, and expansions or extensions of non-conforming uses. And this is already a requirement for rezoned subdivisions and planned unit developments. So Meridian has requested this. The intent is to help ensure that substantial changes to property adjacent to Meridian's boundaries will be compatible with Meridian's planning and design guidelines. And it could also help to reduce the likelihood of new county enclaves forming within Meridian's boundaries going forward. So as detailed in the findings of fact in staff report, staff is recommending approval of all of the proposed changes. This concludes my presentation. Though I'll note, we also have Brian McClure with the City of Meridian participating via WebEx, who would also like to speak to the item.
Okay. Is Brian McClure ready to speak?
Commissioners, I'm, I'm here, yes, thank you.
All right.
I don't have anything else to add, other than to thank county staff for participating on the city's Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee for helping to facilitate this conversation and this renegotiation, and then for you all for taking the time to listen to it.
Thank you, Brian.
Your time's not up.
Where's your gavel? Gaveling down. Mr. Chair.
Are there any others that would like to, to speak to this?
I have one quick question, Mr. Chair, for staff, before we close the public hearing. So on the adoption of additional land into Kuna, how many, how many acres is that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, Brian may be able to speak more to that, that adjustment. I don't recall right offhand how many acres that is. It is a, a large, large amount of land.
Brian, do you have that? And, and the reason I'm asking is Kuna's really struggling right now to keep up with their fire protection. They don't have enough staff to man their truck half the time, and so, you know, I just want to make sure that, that the fire districts out there, departments are aware of this and are- are aware of this and are, you've talked to them and they're convinced that they can come up with the additional resources in order to provide adequate fire protection.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner...
Commissioner, all right.
Go ahead, Brian.
I was, Commissioner, I was just going to say, I don't have the exact area for, for just Kuna, it's approximately 1,100 acres in total. I, I would note, and I think Brent mentioned before, Kuna's already annexed a considerable amount of area in there, and so servicing it at City Meridian would be a little bit more difficult now at this point.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wants to talk? Apparently not, I'm going to close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed on this application. Is there any discussion from the board?
Mr. Chair, I would just like to thank Brian and his team over there for your level of professionalism and, and keeping up with your comp plan and collaboration working with our staff, so thank you, and other than the Kuna question, it looks really good to me. Looks like you're cleaning things up, so that's great.
Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead then and make a motion to approve, let's see, application number 202003073-CPA-ZC-ZOAComprehensive Plan Map and Text Amendment to Adopt Meridian's 2019 Comprehensive Plan within the Meridian Areas, Areas of City of Impact, and that's based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law contained in the staff report here on, thank you.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
I will now open the public hearing on application number 202100598-VAC, Charlesworth Properties LLC. We'll hear from staff, then we'll take testimony.
Mr. Chairman, this is Brent Danielson with Development Services. Project number 202100598-VAC is a vacation of the blanket public utility and drainage easement and pressure irrigation easement, Lot A2 Block 1 of Charlesworth Subdivision Number 2, and I'll go ahead and try to share this real quick. Okay.
Am I making too much noise for you?
No, you're fine, here.
I have one. Tidying up over here.
Yes, mama.
The property is located at 10670 West Cricket Lane in Section 34 Township 3 North, Range 1 East, and consists of 0.097 acres. Charlesworth Subdivision Number 2 is approved through project number 201900651-ZC-DA-S-MSP-PUD. The final plat for the subdivision was signed by the board on November 18, 2020. When Charlesworth Subdivision Number 2 is platted, a blanket public utility, drainage and pressure irrigation easement was placed on all common lots within the subdivision. Lot A2 Block 1 of the subdivision is a common lot within the subdivision that is intended to have a community clubhouse for the residents of the subdivision, and the aforementioned lot here is kind of highlighted with the kind of purplish-blue color. And the site plan in the, in project number 201900651 depicted a clubhouse at this location. The applicant has obtained relinquishment letters for the easement from the Boise Public City Works Department, Century Link, IHO Power, Sparklight, and Suez War IHO. In addition, an eight-foot permanent public utility easement is still being retained for Lot A, Lot A2 Block 1 of Charlesworth Subdivision Number 2 along the southern boundary of the lot. So if you look on the screen here, this is the boundary of Lot A2 here, and they're still retaining an eight-foot permanent utility easement along the southern boundary right here. Staff finds that the application complies with Ada County Code, and I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions?
Yes, sir.
Are there bright lights out there?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman.
Any wine? No wine, no wine.
No wine either.
Okay, are there any other test, testimony on the project? Hearing none? I'm going to close this public hearing.
We have one, we have one.
Oh, there's one? Oh, I'm sorry. Kristen.
Thank you, Commissioners, thank you, Mr. Chair. My name's Kristen McNeil, I'm with the Land Group in Eagle, I'm representing the applicant for Charlesworth Properties, and I don't really have much to add beyond what Brent, Brent's thorough review. As he mentioned, this was basically a typo, and we're just looking to correct this so the applicant, so Charlesworth can move forward in constructing their clubhouse. So we respectfully request your approval this evening, and thank you for your time. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, I don't have any questions unless others from the board have questions. If not, I will close the public hearing. Public hearing closed, or are there, are there discussion from the board?
I have no deliberations, I'm ready to make a motion.
I'll entertain a motion.
All right then, I make a motion to approve application number 202100598-VAC, as it complies with Section 866 of Ada County Code, and it's based on the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and the testimony heard here tonight.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Mr. Chair, I will second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye, all right?
Aye.
If there's nothing further, we'll adjourn tonight's public hearing.